It is Monday, April 25th, 2022, at 5:31 PM. And I'd like to call this work session to order. The first agenda item that we have is city updates. Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, City Council, and Mayor Gradisar. I have a few updates this evening. I'd like to start with a COVID update. The numbers on the Colorado Department of Public Health site this afternoon listed 52.8 positive cases in the last one-week period with a one-week positivity rate of 2.2. Pueblo County does have 13 days of stabilized COVID-19 hospitalizations as of this afternoon, and I do not know if there's COVID patients in either hospital. I don't have that information. Daryl has a file he's going to pull up right quick. The Public Department of Public Health and Environment released a number of places where our citizens can get a free at-home COVID taste testing kit, as well as they distributed some to the city for city employees, family, and if any of you would like any, please let me know. As he pulls this up, you do see it. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, nine different places where they're distributing at-home COVID-19 testing kits. They distributed some at Safety Jam this last weekend, so they are available throughout the community. El Centro de los Pobres, Pueblo Cooperative Care, Colorado Blue Sky, Southern Colorado Harm Reduction, thank you, Neighbor Works, thank you. And let's see, the Pueblo County Health Center, the Colorado Clinic, the Avondale Clinic, the Eastside Clinic, and SRDA. So a number of different places. This flyer is available on the Colorado Department of Public Health website, the Public Department of Public Health website, the city's website, and it will be on all the city's social media tomorrow. So good places for access to a free at-home kit. There is also the vaccine bus, and it will be in Pueblo next on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, at the Jaidon Library on Highway 50 from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, offering Pfizer for 12-year-old plus and Pfizer for children 5 to 11, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna vaccine, and the flu vaccine. The information for accessing the bus next location is also available on the Colorado Department of Public and Public Health and Environment, and it'll be available on the city's social media as well. But next Wednesday, day after tomorrow, this coming Wednesday at Jaidon Library, they are offering the free vaccines. We did get a result of the wastewater influenza test. They're still testing with them in conjunction with a grant from CSU Fort Collins, and there's been a slight increase in the results of the influenza testing in COVID in wastewater for the last two or three test periods. And so it's still continuing to just increase slightly, but they are going to continue to monitor it. So we'll be back to present additional information. And unfortunately, Mr. Evans wasn't available to present to you this evening. That's all with respect to COVID. I'd like to move on to an ARPA update. At our last session, President Graham asked me for reconciliation between the balance going forward in ARPA funds that was presented to City Council at the ARPA spring, I think March the 3rd, that City Council session, as well as the information presented last week in an update with a different starting point amount for January 2022. In finance, they have reconciled it for her, and we didn't present that to you when you were in this last week. We're still reconciling it. It was $129,621 difference, and the differences are the result of P-cards for purchasing additional masks for staff coming into the new year, gift cards as incentives for vaccines for those vaccine buses, the Bell game and the Cannon game. There was a distribution of a get a vaccine and get a coupon at the concession and still reconciling with getting the information back from the district. And then the city spent money for homeless youth t-shirts over the holiday that wasn't in those initial numbers. And also, the interest generated on the bank account where the ARPA funds are distributed is distributed of $688.72. So I will send out a new reconciliation, but those are the reasons for the differences in the two starting January of 2022 amounts. The ARPA balance, so running forward as of tonight, is still the $39,016 that was shared with you via email, and it still does include the $328,500 proposed for 2022 City Council Library District for the Reading Pays event. And the city attorney, I believe, will be working on a subrecipient agreement for your consideration of that amount in the next, for the next meeting. I do not have confirmation yet that the county has agreed to match the $328,500. And I just had that question, I submitted that question to both John Walker and Nick Potter of the Library District just this morning, and I still don't have confirmation back that they received confirmation from the county. This evening, there are ARPA ordinances that are on the agenda for first reading that are subrecipient agreements, and then a professional services contract as well as a resolution. So there's three different places for ARPA this evening depending on where the resources are being distributed to. And then there is also an ordinance on final reading this evening of nine subrecipient agreements, and those are all in one ordinance. Whether you'd like to distribute it and vote separately or not, we'll address that in that when we come to that second reading time in the agenda. Want to move on to the loan forgiveness. Last, let me grab this information for you also. At the last meeting, President Graham asked for reconciliation of the 413 Fund, reconciliation of the spreadsheet of where the $5 million were distributed. And we met with her, as I said, last week and with Anna and Finance and the mayor, and confirmed that the $2.1 million that was distributed in grants was submitted to DOLA for reimbursement, and you wanted confirmation. There were only grants, Council winner, and they were only grants. No loans were submitted for reimbursement. When the city received the $2.1 million from the Department of Local Affairs, we confirmed that it was redeposited in the 413 Fund, which is the half-cent sales tax fund, as well as providing confirmation that the $10,000 loan that was repaid was also redeposited into the 413 Fund. Also, the fact that the $100 that was initially on that spreadsheet was not collected, and it was an error. It was just $10,000 that was redeposited. And lastly, through the reconciliation, each DOLA reconciliation request was provided to President Graham with a backup of all of the detail. But in our reconciliation of the 413 Fund, we did confirm, as she was suggesting, that it was $645,489 that didn't match up in the $5 million report that I had provided, and it is indeed still in the 413 Fund, and it is listed as a commitment approved by City Council, and it is still yet unspent. So the last report that was provided to you had to be last week. It was out of the Finance Office through to for the Economic Development Half-Cent Sales Tax, shows the $645,489 as still a commitment for COVID-19 emergency relief, and the project number is attached. And so, thank you, President Graham, because that reconciled, I think, for everyone that that amount was still outstanding. It would be council's direction of next with a conversation with the mayor on the next disposition of that $645,000. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer any, and also, that does conclude the city's updates for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for that update. What questions are there from Council, Councilor Graham?
Ms. Solano, the $129,000, does that not have to be approved by council, or was that approved by the previous council? Or why was that money spent?
That's a good question. The support for administrative costs for salaries, I believe, was approved just in presentation. That is the compliance coordinator on the front side and the compliance coordinator on the backside. And I do not know if council did approve the vaccines, gift cards that went out for distribution and/or the t-shirts for the homeless. Did approve, however, the masks for staff.
Can we find out if the council approved any of the rest of that stuff?
Yes, I can, or if you recall just today, Mayor.
Or why that money was spent without approval? And then, second, was Anna able to find the $20,000 that was missing off the first page that she provided for me?
Yes, and I think she sent that electronically. She didn't send it to you then, she only sent it to me.
Yep.
I will forward that to you, let me take the note.
Okay, and then one other question. On the round two grants from the 413 account, can you give me a timeframe on when those grants were distributed? Was that the first part or the last, the later part of the year?
The later part of 2020.
So those were those with the $5,000 grants that were also approved from the $988,000 from the COVID Relief Fund?
Yeah, they would all have been from the later part of that year. You remember, the first grant, the first grant alone didn't go out until August. So although City Council approved the $5 million from the half-cent sales tax in April, it took us all the while to gear up with an application process, to put it online, and then the mayor reached out to the External Review Committee, and it took that a while to get the applications back in, to go out to the review team, and to get it back. So the first loans didn't go out from the $2.1 million until loans and grants until August. And so the rest of those loans went out after that through the end of the year.
Well, I received my loan May 12, 2020. So that was...
They geared up that quickly.
That was April, May, and then the second round of COVID relief was late December. So my question was, was this 807 part of that $5,000 grant that you guys made available in the later part of the year?
It was, and the dates are not on the spreadsheet that we distributed to you. I think that they were truncated for just inclusion in the folder. So I'll go back, and the actual dates of each of those are included in that same spreadsheet.
We're meeting with her on Thursday, so I can actually follow up with her now, so you don't have to be the middleman on that one, if that's okay.
Well, I'll ask her to make sure and extend the spreadsheet so you can see the exact dates.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Winner.
Ms. Solano, when you and I had a conversation on Tuesday on the phone, you said that you found a $200,000 mistake. Can you tell me what that was?
I think it was the $645,000, I don't believe $200,000. But it was this amount found in the 413 Fund. And with Anna's reconciliation, it was found not to have been spent.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Councilor Winner.
I'll go. So when Mr. Walker was here with the library wanting to redo that program again next year for the $100 per child, I asked him if he could let us know how many children attended that had never been in the library before, and he said he could easily get that information to us. I just think it's important, because we throw a lot of money out there, and we're still not reaching the population that needs to be reached. So I'd like to know what's going on there.
Thank you, Councilor, I'll ask for that follow-up.
Other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you so much, Ms. Solano, for that update. We're going to move right along then to our second agenda item around Bexhamer Community Center development. So can I please have Ms. Solano and Mr. Howell to the podium, please? Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council members, Mayor. My name is Jude Solano. I am the co-founder and CEO of Southern Colorado Harm Reduction, and I haven't been here for a while, so been busy. Want to share with you some of the information. Do we have our slide deck? I do. All right. So currently, we are located at 1249 East Route Avenue. We're part of the Neighbor Works complex, and they have been amazing to us over the last five years. It's hard to believe that I started this organization with Mike Nuremberg five years ago, and we have doubled in size every year, and this last year, we actually tripled. So things are going well. We opened our doors in 2017, and we are a nonprofit providing services and support and advocacy for people experiencing life disruptions due to substance use disorders and mental health disorders. We also provide support for their loved ones. This is a really important piece that, as a medical professional, I saw years ago when the opioid epidemic started to rise. I saw that literally, not just the individuals, the communities, their family members, everybody was getting just as broken, and we need to care for them as well. Some of you have been inside our facility. I'm pretty proud of it, very humble. And the mural on the wall was done by a local artist and muralist that we can't wait to see what he's going to do at our current or upcoming location. Unfortunately, I have some data that I think you really need to understand why we do what we do and how problematic it really is and devastating. The overdose death rate in Colorado spiked to an all-time high in 2020. It was the largest jump that we've seen over 20 years. The rate increased by 38%, and you can see the number of lives lost. It's very difficult to go anywhere for myself in our community and anywhere around the state to have a discussion with people that really haven't been frontline affected. You know, the Pew Research Foundation, gosh, three years ago, estimated that 62% of the US population's frontline affected by this epidemic. I would wage to think that it's even higher than that now. Everyone has been affected in some way, even if it's just a business owner or a family member, a cousin, a church member. We've all been affected. Last year, we lost 956 people, and this was from the 2019 data. That was a 54% increase in overdose deaths, and this is due to opioids. And this category also includes the fentanyl. I know this has been a buzzword, the fentanyl prevalence in the drugs that people are buying and what it is found in. And I can tell you, it is found in pretty much everything. I was able to present about two months ago to District 60 school nurses and administration because they had an overdose at the school, a 15-year-old. The kids are buying these vape pods for their vape pens, and they thought it was cannabis. And they're too young to buy it legally and knowing that. So they bought black market, and it was laced with opioids. She did overdose at school. So that's happening. In Colorado, fentanyl-associated deaths more than doubled. And this is CDPH, our State Health Department data, if anyone would like further information on that. Slide, this is staggering. The United States is only 5% of the world's population, yet we incarcerate 25% of the prison population worldwide. And Colorado is not slacking in those numbers. We are pretty much at national average. We incarcerate 614 people per 100,000. This is a little confusing, so I will explain. This shows the disparities of who gets incarcerated. As you can see, white, the white population is 62% of the US population, yet they're only incarcerated at 32% of the prison population. I wanted to jump to black. Black community is only 12% of the US population. Yet they are incarcerated at 30% of the US population. Hispanic is 17% and incarcerated at 21%. Now, I'd like you to notice, if you jump down to the very bottom, American Indian or Alaskan native is 0.7% of the US population, yet they are incarcerated at 1.4% of the prison population. That's double. And this is some actual living proof data about the disparities of people that are incarcerated. We've known for a long time who, what has been the background, what have been the challenges of people that are being incarcerated in the highest rates possible. So these are some societal factors and economic factors about who gets incarcerated. People that have had a parent, and this, any of you that know about ACEs, adverse childhood events, know that a person is at least 50 to 75% more likely to be incarcerated if they've had a parent who's been incarcerated. Foster care kids, they are just as likely, 18%, almost 20%, experiencing homelessness before the age of 18. Families in subsidized or public housing. Families receiving public assistance before the age of 18. Those that did not complete high school. And 68% of the population that is incarcerated was arrested before the age of 19. Half of that population was arrested before the age of 16. So we've seen a 123% increase in drug felony filings in the state of Colorado between 2012 and 2018. 75% of the drug felony cases filed in Colorado were for possession. So this is a population that is not the, I guess, the targeted individuals that we all hoped that they would be, those that are participating in the more serious crimes and distribution, the big cases. These are people, at this point in time, this surprises me and this amazes me, but this is what we're, is continuing to make our community sick when people are being arrested for the possession. We need to treat addiction as a healthcare issue, not as a criminal issue. The Colorado prison population is expected to increase by 38.2% between fiscal years 2017 and 2024, and this rate of growth is substantially higher than was previously expected. I won't leave you with a sad feeling in your gut. There is hope. SCARA is unique, and some of the benefits of harm reduction programs overall are free public health services. This is a gateway to get people into wellness and functionality at some level. We provide HIV/HEPC testing services. That is really the foundation of where harm reduction started, is to address the issues of the AIDS crisis way back when. We provide overdose prevention services and allicone and fentanyl testing strips, syringe service programs, AccuDetox. And I'm very proud to say, two-thirds of my staff are now trained in AccuDetox, so they can provide services. It was just me. Now they're all trained, and we can provide services for more members of the community. We have peer support services to address the needed resources, and again, direct pathways to healthcare partners, telehealth and MAT services, medication-assisted treatment. Next slide. So this is what we've been busy doing over the last five years. We currently have five areas of free healthcare supports and systems that we've put in place. One of the first one being our LEAF program, which is our life empowerment and fulfillment project. And it is for underserved youth and those re-entering citizens out of Pueblo County Jail. Currently, we're at the Goal Academy, and I believe my project director, Danielle Harwell, is here, and she's been the rock star that has developed this program. We have peer recovery specialists, who are people with lived experience, but they've also been credentialed at the state level to be peer support specialists, because that is an emerging practice that is also becoming more and more accepted and needed on the healthcare teams. We have our CRAFT program, which is our community reinforcement family training. And again, looking at the holistic part of this is we have to engage families and loved ones. And this, I love this program, ours in particular. It is an eight-week training program that helps families and loved ones address things like effective communication, knowing the strategies, and knowing what type of treatment and what they do and what they are. And yet, this has turned into a support system. So a confidential support system for family loved ones to be able to have discussions, because so many have had similar experiences in their journey, and they've learned to engage more in their own self-care. We've been able to say out loud, you have to care for yourself, and it's good to care for yourself, you need to do this. So I love this program. We've had some family members that have been participating for over two years. They just keep recycling the eight-week program. So that's amazing. In my spare time, I've been the coordinator and partnered with the Library District and Colorado Treatment Services, as well as SCARA, to have the vaccination bus. So the Jaidon Clinic, that is something I've been coordinating over the past year and a half. Started at the Neighbor Works building, just having indoor clinics, and our first clinics were attended by approximately anywhere from 250 to 300 people. So it's been quite the journey. I knew, again, as a registered nurse, I wanted to do something. I wasn't in traditional practice, so this was something that I could do and help with. It's been amazing. This past month, in month of April, we received a grant called the Moms Grant. It was an award given by HICPuff Healthcare Policy and Finance for the state of Colorado, and it is a grant for pregnant people to not only obtain the services and the systems that they need, but also to make sure that they are engaged in services to have a healthy pregnancy. We have a peer specialist who herself is a mother and has overcome several addictions to be able to support moms in this program. We have a clothing bank, we're always taking donations. And our referrals and education for treatment and healthcare, I want to emphasize that we don't just give referrals. We want to make sure that we're giving accurate information about what type of healthcare systems and needs people have, because not everybody needs to be on medication-assisted treatment. That is for opioids, and some people might be struggling more with a meth addiction or more of the stimulants. So every case is different, and we just need to be unattached and unaffiliated to any one healthcare system to be able to support people and gain their trust, because there is a lot of mistrust surrounding the healthcare system. And I think that goes further than just those that we serve. We have our syringe service program, which has been, that was our foundation when we started, and our overdose prevention services. So we provide Narcan and fentanyl test strips. We're actually also giving those out at the jail for people that are exiting jail a few times a week and providing what we call a goodie bag. It has socks, gloves, hat, and it also has all the resources, including us, if for people that want to get more further support and assistance, housing, food, job, all of those things are needed. AccuDetox and our healthcare partners. So again, I'm very healthcare-oriented, and I have partnered over this past year with a company called Care on Location. They are Denver-based telehealth organization, and they are onsite two days a week. It's staffed by an EMT, and we provide telehealth services and behavioral health services. services for people just coming into all of our programs. So that has been wildly successful, and we're looking at expanding those services. We also have our partnership with Front Range Clinic, which has been ongoing for the past three years. They are also onsite, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays at SCARA's location. And we have Vivint Health, I can't not mention them. They have been our HIV and Hep C testing partners, and they also provide STD testing. Our latest developments, so we have acquired 219 West Northern Avenue in Bessemer. It was my diamond in the rough that I have been dreaming into existence for the last five years. And we have this beautiful new strategic partnership with the Eighty-Eight Group, Gregory and Jeff Howell, who'll be speaking shortly, and the William Brummitt Architect Firm. They are a Denver-based firm and an amazing architect. He's trauma-informed, um, and he has built several skilled facilities and is currently the main architect on the Women's Bean Project. And if you don't know what the Women's Bean Project is, I suggest you Google them. It's an amazing organization that was developed in the eighties, and it was, um, an opportunity for women coming out of domestic violence and learning how to be self-sufficient. They gave them jobs and they developed the project. So when you go into King Supers or Safeway and you go to the legume section, you'll see these fancy little bean, um, soup, uh, packages, that's the Women's Bean Project. So it's been amazing, and that's our architect, so I'm really excited, he's been amazing. Some of the challenges for a harm reduction organizations, and, um, you know, we've been very blessed. I think the partnerships and the vision for the type of harm reduction organization that I want to see SCARA be is a little more diverse because of where we are. In most areas, the concentration is mostly on syringe service programs, overdose prevention and have C, HIV prevention. So, um, there are many communities around even Pueblo that want to get started with something, but it's still, we're battling the stigma still to a degree. The stigma of funding and sustainability, yet we have shown that these evidence-based practices work. Again, the recognition and acceptance of our programming. I think this is changing, it's a paradigm shift, we've all had to make that, I had to make that as a medical professional. I don't know, I don't think I've ever shared, but my journey into harm reduction started when I was working on my master's degree, and I started studying countries around the world, and what were they doing to decrease their overdose deaths and the illness of addiction? And countries like Portugal, Sweden, the Netherlands started to crop up, and it made sense and it works. So again, I want to emphasize, you know, we're battling this prison pipeline system, and we definitely need to support systems and services that are addressing this issue. Otherwise, it does none of us any good to have a sick society and an incarcerated society. Once somebody has crossed that line, their life has been devastated. They can't get jobs, they can't get a place to live. Many can't vote in certain parts of the country. And that's, if this gets worse, that will only get worse. We're always looking for housing, food and employment opportunities. You know, we've adopted the philosophy, and my team knows this, and it's been amazing at this, if there's a need, we have to try to meet it, no matter what it is. We've paid for somebody's electricity to get turned on, we've paid for food baskets, we've paid for gift cards, we've paid for a lift to get from point A to point B. It's hard to be poor and struggling. It's, it's consuming and exhausting. I would love to see us all take one day and be able to walk that path. I think it would change your life forever. So a little nice factoid, people are five times more inclined to engage in healthcare when they're accessing a harm reduction organization, and this makes sense, because people confront, um, basically their illness in one, in one of three ways, either through law enforcement, the emergency department, or harm reduction organization. So it just stands to reason that when they are in a situation where it's calm, it's safe, they're treated with dignity and respect, not to say these other systems don't do that, but that's what this is about, you gain that trust and you develop that relationship. And people are ten times more likely, Mayor, this is for you, to engage in healthcare when accessing safe consumption sites. So this is our CRAFT flyer. These are just some of the, uh, the topics that we cover in this class. So again, learning about triggers and the very real existence of those, for people that are struggling, positive communication strategies, positive reinforcement, self-care, domestic violence precautions. That's another part of the CRAFT system, is we make sure that people are safe, that are dealing with a loved one. Thank you. And this is our gym. I can't tell you what a dream come true this building is. I remember, I'm, I'm a steel mill baby, and I remember walking down Northern Avenue, and this was a department store, similar to Dillard's, it was a very nice department store. Northern Avenue, this whole section was very similar to Union Avenue now, and I am convinced that this could be the Renaissance of Bessemer. Gregory caught and I shot, it's just the beautiful sunset and these great windows. So this, there was, there was some posters on our great windows, and this window here, a truck decided it wanted to make friends and went through there a few weeks ago, so this is completely boarded up now. But we are, this community center is fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four square feet. We are going to expand not only our SCARA services, but we also want to bring in a real grocery store. This neighborhood is a food desert, it has nothing except the dollar store, and people shop at the dollar store for their nutrition, which does not exist. We want to bring in, we have several partners, including the library district, who wants to do a satellite here for adult education opportunities and workforce development. We are, have an entire healthcare wing and our partners, the Front Range Clinic, color treatment services, we're having some discussion with, and, um, and our Care on Location. Urgent Care will be on this site. So my, that beautiful Hollywood-looking couple in the middle are my parents, Charles and Helen Solano, and I'm naming this center after them. They are now in the heavens, but I think they'd be really proud. Again, my dad was a steel mill, um, soon for thirty-two years, so this is personal. Thank you, I'm going to hand it over to Gregory now.
And I'm going to speak just briefly, just to keep this with time, because I know we're running just a little bit, but I'm really just going to talk more about building capacity. I mean, I think Jude has done a phenomenal job just in explaining the services that she's provided over the last five years, and then understanding the nature of this building. I mean, the old Vic Baines Department Store has a story in its own right. And so as far as building capacity, one of the things that I love is this collaborative approach. And so not only has she called upon William Brummitt and Associates, but also the Eighty-Eight Group. And the two of our organizations, we've been building a capacity plan in terms of how we can actually build out this particular structure, so that it isn't just specifically about the services that are being provided for this one particular demographic, but it does become an actual community center, which is why it was named the Bessemer Community Center. The Eighty-Eight Group, our mission has always been, as a low-profit private developer, is to ensure the development and preservation of affordable and accessible housing in Pueblo. But a lot of these services, before you even get to that point, say, housing first, really rely on the services that SCARA is actually providing. I'll show you just briefly, we've already developed, we're about seventy-five percent finished, about almost eighty percent with all of the floor plans. We have all of our contractors or all of the different areas of development, and as Judy said, we have the entire first floor, half of it being dedicated to a grocery store, and then the second floor really being dedicated to healthcare services and also meeting space. So one of the things that we want to encourage is, on the lower level, is actually, there'll be event space, there'll be spaces for art shows or for poetry readings, things of that sort. And on the second floor, services that would enable people to actually come and use meeting space, because there's a real need for just having space in the Bessemer neighborhood. So if you're a group or an organization and you want to have space to have an event or something of that nature, this would be provided also. I'm also very passionate as the acting chair for the historic preservation for the city of Pueblo. Rooting this whole project in the history of that particular neighborhood is critical. And the Vic Baines Department Store, if you know the origin story, the original store in the San Luis Valley is on the Colorado State Historic Register, and the story is somewhat tragic, I won't get into details, but what happened in the San Luis Valley forced the family to move to Pueblo in the nineteen forties, establishing the store. And we really want to embrace, the city of Pueblo has done extraordinary work in terms of their historical context reports. The one that we're looking at here is called Forge Together in the Bessemer Neighborhood. If you haven't accessed these, these are all about two-hundred to four-hundred pages each on each neighborhood of Pueblo, and so the work's already been done. What we need to do here, though, is to ensure that the services and what's developed is actually aligned with and partnered with the history, the culture, the arts and the business, especially this being just a few blocks from the Steel Work Center. And of course, if you've been on Northern lately, you've seen a lot of interesting new restaurants popping up, a lot of fun activity is happening there. Just to give you an idea, just prior to purchasing this, there was a great deal of work spent on the actual renovations. This is the first floor on the west side. This is the east side of that same building, which will be dedicated to the grocery store. And then this is just a part of the second floor. So when you start talking about fourteen thousand square feet, it is a massive space that is really conducive to providing not only the services that SCARA is currently providing, but expanding those and meeting the needs of the community. And then really, this is just so important, and I know Pueblo has done such a phenomenal job with the Pueblo Food Project, but we believe everyone, no matter your circumstances, deserves to experience the joy of picking out fresh, healthy groceries. That's why we are creating a new kind of food pantry and market on the first floor of the Bessemer Community Center to deal with the lack of access to healthy foods. This is just the next chapter as we continue to grow and build capacity to ensure equitable access to not only healthcare, but also nutritional food. So really empowering community creativity and turning ideas into action. That's really what we're trying to do with our collaborative platform, and we're very excited to be where we are today and moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Solano and Mr. Howell for that brilliant presentation. What questions are there from Council? Councilor Martinez, we're taking it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for that presentation, that's phenomenal. What is the timeline for your, for the community center, Bessemer Community Center to open? Am I getting the name right?
So, yes.
Okay, great.
It is Bessemer Community Center.
Yeah.
BCC. Um, I'm probably being delusional, but I'm on an eight-month timeline.
And so about the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I'm wondering, is there a way that, that the city can help, um, help partner with any of these programs, with these evidence-based practices, um, to help start up some of these programs with, for you to help fill that space? Anything like that, please come back to us and ask us for something. I would love to see what we can help you all with. I'd like to see the city, I have it on my list of to-dos to contact Public Works about, talking about a flower pot or the flower, the raised flower beds in front of that window to help secure some of those folks who are going to be accessing that, from what I understand, a garage door, um, which is prime to just drive on into, unless there's something in the way. So let's see what we can do there.
And the crosswalk, I don't know if anyone has ever noticed, but that crosswalk goes at an angle, a diagonal, and I have seen more people almost get hit on that corner. It needs to go straight across. And if anyone knows, I need that lot across the street. We, there is no parking, but there is, there needs to be that setup and access if people are coming in. I did forget to also add, there's so much great stuff going on. SCARA's been chosen by Illumina Colorado to be one of the providers for a daycare mobile van, a unit, it's an RV, a huge RV, and we are, we and Health Solutions are, have the two organizations chosen. So we will be having that onsite on Wednesdays, um, and even like the vaccination buses that have been, we need places for these large units to park and to be, and that serves the organization, it's right off of I-25, so.
Yes, and some of those, um, those portable units, those take care of like some of the transportation issues that a lot of folks in Pueblo have. And we just took a tour of, of one of those RVs last week.
Yes, that's the RV that we're getting.
Yes, it was phenomenal, and so we were thinking, it's like, well, if it only serves eight young, young people at a time, it actually serves sixteen, including their parents, um, but that's also per hour and X amount of, it's, it's phenomenal, and we're lucky to have that here in Pueblo, and thank you all.
Thank you. Other question, Councilor Warner.
Hi, thanks for that presentation. You know, you mentioned fentanyl in every product out there, and the research that I've read about says that addicts actually want fentanyl in their product. Do you, do you agree with that? Because there's some people that, they're, they're doing straight fentanyl when they're shooting up.
Some are. But again, we have to look at this in terms of how did this begin? And as people have become more, fentanyl's cheaper, they know it's dangerous, um, and it, it actually, when, when you start using it, the transition to black, back to heroin is more difficult. So, you know, yeah, we, we can see these things in studies, but I can tell you, boots on the ground and my everyday work, I have these conversations. I like to do our overdose prevention, because I can engage directly with people and find out what's happening out there. You know, they're scared, this is, this is a frightening thing, and knowing that they, you know, we, we've heard all the distorted media stories about people purposely using it and having Narcan so they could test the limits of living and dying.
That was actually in the Denver Post, I think.
Yeah, okay, that, that's, I have some issues with some of them. I'm just going to say, again, I live this life, and that is not the norm. I'm sure it happens, there's no doubt, um, just like anything else in life. There, there are people that push boundaries, but is it the common thing? I would say, no, it's not the common thing in Pueblo.
Okay. And another great thing about your organization is that you are, you have folks that are approaching you for help. So generally, if you're worried about sharing needles, um, then they're apt to show up at your door. If you're not, then they're not going to be there. So these are people that are scared, like you said, and starting to think about their health, which is, which is good.
Yeah, and we've actually also started purchasing, and people are transitioning into safer usages. So we provide smoking supplies and snorting supplies, because you can get hepatitis by sharing those things. And so we're actually seeing people want to engage in safer use. That's a step forward. Yeah, and I, I feel that, to me, that's exciting, that's participating in your healthcare, because the next step is, what can I do? I'm tired.
Other, Councilor Atencio.
Good work, good presentation. The thing that I took most from was that drug use, drug abuse is a health problem, it's not a law enforcement problem, and we should be treating it that way, like a lot of other countries are doing, a lot of other states are doing. And the other thing, safe use sites, we should lead instead of follow, we really should lead in Pueblo, and do a pilot project, see if it works. And do a pilot project, see if it works. It's been, it works in other places, we should do it here. Thank you.
There is a lot of work being done at the state level. Denver City Council has authorized the first site in Colorado, but getting it past the State House has been the issue. So none of us can do anything. I, I appreciate that you're even open to the possibility. And that's a whole other conversation to come back and talk about. Because if we all want this contained, and there hasn't been a single death in a safe consumption site. And they're interacting with healthcare professionals, so it's a very effective system.
It's healthcare.
That's right.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'm very excited for the grocery store. And, and I think that that's going to be really great for the Bessemer community to have access to healthy foods. So we look forward to seeing it open in eight months.
Great. Yeah, thank you, everybody.
All right, our next presentation is from Neighbor Works. So can I please have Ms. Wyans and Ms. Plush? Hey, whenever you're ready.
Madam Chair, I am, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Kukosek.
Neighbor Works has requested approval of the Pike's Peak Park filing number one subdivision. That's item R10 on tonight's agenda. I know there's going to be some overlap, but I, I want to make clear to council and to those who are here that there will be a second hearing on the subdivision. And to the extent we could keep subdivision questions for the regular meeting, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Noted. Thanks, Mr. Kukosek.
Thank you. As I think all of you know now, I'm Ashley Wyans with Neighbor Works Southern Colorado. But I do recognize that a lot of folks are new on city council on this last period. In addition to that, we're doing a lot more. So we wanted to actually have a presentation that gives some information that will help you expand your knowledge of the organization and then introduce an ARPA project that we are hoping will be considered in the next tranche of ARPA funds, should those be received. So I want to start, if you want to move on to the next slide here, with just an overall mission impact. Our organization's mission is to promote healthy, vibrant neighborhoods and serve as a first choice for homebuyer resources in Southern Colorado. And they, we kind of do this through our core belief, which is that building sustainable neighborhood starts with building stable homes. Neighbor Works Southern Colorado actually has been around for 45 years. You saw on the first slide, this year we will have our Sapphire Celebration for our celebration of home. We're really excited to have been serving the community that long. And we were formed about a year before Neighbor Works America was formed. Neighbor Works America was formed congressionally in 1978 as a means toward putting together a network of organizations like Neighbor Works Southern Colorado throughout the United States, DC and Puerto Rico, that will serve our communities through neighborhood reinvestment. That's reinvesting in local areas with federal funds and to be able to, to better these neighborhoods. And the reason that it was congressionally founded is because they wanted to take all these different, I could throw like a million acronyms at you, right? They're part of the T-Het appropriation and the appropriation for the US Department of the Treasury. All of these that have home dollars and Chodo dollars and CDBG, this and that. What is each organization doing and how do you sort of collaboratively report that to Congress to show how well those work? So we joined this group with now 245 network organizations, but we're still an independent nonprofit organization functioning here in Southern Colorado. We operate under four pillars. So each one of these organizations operate under the pieces that are needed to impact their community. And ours are these four pillars, we believe: education, lending, building, and engaging. We educate through homebuyer education, financial fitness. We actually recently introduced rental education into our group classes through different counseling. Unfortunately, we're seeing that first one really increase quite a bit right now, which is our foreclosure mitigation. And we're working very hard to keep people in their homes. Homebuyer development, that's one-on-one credit counseling and coaching, action plan development. And we are actually the financial navigation program provider here locally, as you probably know, and recently approved some ARPA funds for. We're lending, we're the only CDFI, that's a community development financial institute located in southeastern Colorado, serving southeastern Colorado. That's a certification by the US Department of the Treasury. And what that means is that we meet certain standards and report annually on how we use different funds and what those funds are used for. Our target markets for our community, our Hispanic population and our low-income population, specifically for those lending products that you see. We do home lending. What's missing maybe off of there, you're, that you don't see is we actually offer community seconds. We have just under $2 million that we put into community seconds. For instance, we just recently closed on a home, we did an $82,000 second mortgage, and we were able to be at a lower interest rate than they had on their first. And that $82,000 went over that 20% threshold that a lot of us know as homeowners, right? We, we meet that and then we can get rid of mortgage insurance. So the reduced interest rate and the reduction of mortgage insurance made the home more affordable for the new homebuyer. We have small business lending. We can actually lend from $5,000 to $250,000. We serve four counties with that loan program, including Pueblo. And we have just under $3 million available for lending in that, that program. And then we have a rehab lending program. That's a new program for us. It's a startup, so we only have about $300,000 in there. We plan to do all of that lending this next year as well. We build, as you know, this is all about the Pike's Peak Park, so that'll keep moving. But we are finishing out Hyde Park Gardens. If you've been over there on the west side next to Chavez Horta Academy, we've got about 24 homes going in right now. Some of those are affordable and some are not. They're mixed use and, and market rate, or I'm sorry, low income and market rate. We finished the Liberty Gardens subdivision and an IndyDwell home in our past as well. So it's something that we have a lot of experience in. And then we engage. Our primary focus right now with Engage is our community development in and around food inequities in our community. We have the Bessemer Mobile Food Pantry that we are the financial manager for, and we actually manage the volunteers for that program as well. That's a once, once a month food distribution program in Bessemer. We have the La Familia Community Garden on the east side, which will be kicking off May 13th. We grow healthy, fresh foods there. Those get donated or people come and actually garden in that garden. And then we have little libraries and blessing boxes that we keep food in, and now we add clothing to those, something that Scarra has helped us with as well. Not noted on there, but, but something that Neighbor Works has always done is a lot of different community development projects. We host a lot of community organizations onsite. The Women's League, for instance, the Colorado Smelter Revitalization Program, the CSRP, and several others. Because we have a big community space and educational room that we utilize for that. And I welcome Scarra to add to that because there is no shortage of meetings that need to happen in Bessemer, and people just don't have the meeting space or the income to, you know, a revenue stream to, to pay to have a meeting space. So those are just some of the things that we do. I know at the beginning I said, you know, we're part of the T-Het appropriation through our partnership with Neighbor Works America. To give you just sort of a really quick overview of some of the accomplishments we've had in the last, just the last year alone. Neighbor Works Southern Colorado is one of the largest educators for financial capabilities in the United States, second only to Pocatello, Idaho, believe it or not. We educated 2,100 families this last year. We invested back into the community $190 million through different work, like our construction projects and our educational programs that help people get into homes, as well as our lending programs. And in addition to that, we do receive some federal funds from that T-Het appropriation. And we leverage those federal funds $514 to one. So for every dollar we brought in of federal funds, we raised and put back into the community an additional $514. So I think we're a pretty impactful organization. I know that we are a little bit smaller than some of the other Neighbor Works, and I want to just point that out because we're really proud of the work that we do here in Pueblo. And we're going to go ahead now, and I'm going to let Tamara sort of take the reins and give the overview of the Pike's Peak Park request for ARPA funds and then just some of the explanation of that.
Now that you know a little bit more about Neighbor Works and the work that we've done in the past and what we're working on now, we are also wanting, just to provide you a little bit of insight into our request for ARPA funding for this second round that's going to be coming up. So as we move forward, of the seven pillars of focus of the Pueblo American Rescue Plan Act, our request of $5 million primarily focuses on the community resilience, individuals, households, and infrastructure. And if awarded, it'll assist in leveraging over $13 million for the Pike's Peak Park project as a whole that will be brought back into the Pueblo community. Our primary area of focus is Pueblo's west side, which is seen here in the blue tract that you see. And the area is focused centralized on Pueblo's west side, lying within the boundary that you see here. Now, the project will be attributing these funds to, will have influence on the connectivity for the greater Pueblo community. So as we put these funds in there and actually build out our project, it will involve the connectivity throughout the rest of the Pueblo area. Some of the facts having to do with this west side community is it has a population around 3,000. It does lie within an opportunity zone. And 31.6% live below the poverty level in this area, with 27.3% receiving food stamps or stamp, stamp benefits. Pueblo as a whole has 19.5% living with a disability. However, in this area, we see 24.4% of the, of the west side population living with a disability. And it does have a high concentration of persons of color, with 61.4% identifying as Hispanic Latino and 6% self-identifying as Black. And then also within this, you know, Pueblo as a whole had 19.5% that did not have internet access. In the west side area, 28.3% had no access to internet. And then also 19.2% in the west side had no computer device. So you can imagine the effects that, that COVID had. So let's speak to just the impacts of COVID. The west side did have, of course, as you just saw, a disproportionate level of poverty of people of color, people living with disabilities. 11% of the community had no insurance and public transportation was non-existent during COVID. Residents were unable to seek medical help and get to their health, get to their health facilities to take care of health issues and which resulted in further health issues and even resulting in death. With widespread school closures as a result of COVID, economically vulnerable populations facing, they had to face greater hurdles, and greater hurdles. So the children that were not able, that were already at a disadvantage of having struggles in education and then not having access to the resources that we're needing in order to do the remote learning and continue their education are now facing more hurdles as they're now going back into the classrooms, and we're seeing that in this recording. So increasing access to public transportation, walkability, and increasing neighborhood connectivity will help to unburden this west side area. Neighbor Works has spent the last two years master planning the Pike's Peak Park project. And we did take into consideration all the details and all the facts that we did just reveal. So this was, this is going to be a first-of-its-kind development here in Pueblo, and it is in line with the city's most recent comprehensive plan, checking almost all the boxes in, in what future development will be consisting of, including high density, walkability, mixed use, mixed income, mixture of housing types, green space, and trails to increase connectivity. Just a little bit of overview, continued overview of the project as a whole, so we can get to why we are requesting $5 million in ARPA funding. The Pike's Peak Park project will consist of 604 planned housing units. It'll be mixed use, mixed income, include permanently affordable homeownership. Providing a mixture of housing types will allow us to market to those of every income level and meet the various needs of our community. By providing the community, that includes commercial and community buildings, as well as over 15 acres of green space. We're providing the amenities needed while providing a healthy environment to enjoy year-round and including permanently affordable homeownership opportunities to those who would otherwise be locked out of homeownership. We're providing an opportunity to shrink the wealth gap and promote equality through generational wealth building in our community. And let's see here. Going on to the project budget, so the request of $5 million in ARPA funds falls within our entitlements and infrastructure piece of our projected pro forma. While the entire project is slated to cost around $110 million, the entitlements and infrastructure piece is estimated at approximately $4.32 million. So we've already raised additional funding to help with, help with these costs here. But the additional of, the addition of $5 million in the ARPA funding would assist us in getting closer to the amounts needed and preventing us from having to use traditional financing and incurring additional costs associated with things like inter, raising interest rates at this point. So these, of the eligible expenses that are eligible for the ARPA funding, we have them broken down here, design engineering, water quality installation, park installation, detention pot, I'm sorry, detention ponds, and broadband. In a mixed income community, using ARPA funds to install infrastructure is going to significantly reduce the amount needing to be allocated by things such as our metro district, and thus the amount that's passed on to those residents, making it more affordable to live in a beautiful area with a variety of different resources available. By providing access to public parks, green space, we are enhancing the community resilience and improving the quality of life and public health of all those who are going to be using the features of Pike's Peak Park and the connections through the city's planned regional trail systems. The communities that are going to be impacted, of course, the west side community that we had outlined in the census tract before, but also increasing connectivity to the greater Pueblo area is, it's going to be done by connecting the existing trail systems and bringing in public transportation. So we'll get into that transportation here in just a moment, but the water quality here. Funds attributed to sewer water and water detention would significantly reduce the amount of funds that would be needed to be borrowed. Because any public improvements made with the metro district funds being paid back through property tax of each resident, the metro, in the metro district, having the reduction in these funds made possible by the ARPA funds would reduce the amount of property tax each homeowner would be responsible for, making the homes that much more affordable. In the budget, I know we've been through it pretty quickly, but in the budget, you saw that there was a $0, $0 attributed to the broadband. Now, while we, while we just found out today, I just spoke with, with our provider, and they advised us that we are going to be eligible to get that installed at zero cost to us and that our community buildings will be eligible for lip zones. So that is wonderful news that we heard today. So broadband will not be part of the ARPA funding, but it is, it was there. Internet accessibility is a necessity within the area to help promote equality in the community as we spoke about previously with the effects that COVID had on this community as a whole. The existing public transportation that we just spoke of. So this here is a map of the two bus lines that are close and nearest to their site. We have bus line three as well as eight there. There is no bus line that kind of goes through that census tract that you can see, as well as no real open green space in the area. So going on to the next one, you'll see that with our connected trails to the planned regional trail system, so the picture on the left is our detention ponds, where we will have a planned trail system connecting, or I'm sorry, our trail system that would be connecting to the city's planned regional trail system. It's not currently in existence in that area, but we hope that with our development, it'll help spur that, that growth and connection down to the major center and out to, out to other, following basically the plan. With the bus lines, addition of the bus lines running through the west side will run through the center of our site, increasing the connectivity and for the resources that are up north of our site, as well as down, down further south and into the greater Pueblo area. And just a little bit more on the trails, use of the multimodal trails throughout Pike's Peak Park along 24th Street and up down, up down through Sun Mountain, will promote the use of other modes of transportation, increasing the livability of Pueblo. And through, again, through the, through the trail system there. Now, also with our, our parks are already planned with a multimodal trail and path that will connect the entire development. However, we want to ensure that we provide an environment that is accessible to all. So with the high population of people living with disabilities and adverse abilities residing in the west side area. The West Side area, um, we want to include a play feature that is accessible to all age, all ages and all abilities. Um, these are just a few of the ideas here, but I don't think that we have very many of these and with an area that's highly populated with people with disabilities, whether that be the elderly. The young, we want to make sure that we are supplying resources to all of them. So um, that is also included in the, in the ARPA request. And I know that was very quick. We wanted to make sure we ranked in time. However, um, any questions?
Well, I want to say thank you to Tamara, um, first off for going through that whole piece for us. And just kind of reiterate, because we did go through that so quickly, the ARPA funds are specifically for things that ARPA has allowed for. So the, although. Um, infrastructure uh and the entitlement piece is a fourteen million dollar budget line item. That five mile in would actually go specifically for things like the parks development, the water detention, water quality. Um, and and so the things that we have seen that are eligible uses for that. Uh, so that's part of where we're asking for that. And then one of the things that was said, um, but kind of went through really quickly was that seventy four percent of our homeownership units. Are slated to be shared equity. Shared equity happens through both public and private. One-time investments that create homeownership that will be affordable opportunity. This is a one-time opportunity for us to actually utilize some of these funds to start that one-time investment that will create affordability. You know, for the next two hundred years for homeownership in this community specifically. By reducing the costs um on the front end for infrastructure, not not having to be passed on to the. Thank you all for listening and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Yeah, thanks Tamara and Ashley. Um, what questions are there for, are there for council, Councilor Flores?
You know, uh, there's so many things that you've done to try to reduce the, you know, the monthly mortgage for. The people that are going to be in this area. And as I understand, an, an average, uh, if you're a, a married couple with say two children. Uh, of going price, I guess, for a home in Pueblo right now is about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So if you take that model of just a, in any development in, in the city. Contrast that with how much you could either reduce the cost of the house or the cost of their mortgage payment. With all of these, I mean, I, I've lost track of how many things you've done along with what you're doing with the land, as I understand. What could you typically, uh, what would be the percentage, I guess, of reduction? To a young couple like that, that could get the same house in your development, uh, that, uh. You know, if you could contrast the two and make it more affordable for a young couple of my example.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it's a, it's a really good example and those housing prices just keep going up. Right now, what we anticipate is, is that hopefully some of those construction costs will level out a little bit in the next two years. Um, but we've definitely built in some inflation for that, um, especially right now in twenty twenty two. Uh, as we probably won't be building till twenty twenty three and we anticipate that to be significant. So that three hundred and twenty five thousand is probably actually a little bit conservative, um, but, but fair. Our goal is to raise between seventy five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars per unit. Um, for that shared equity component, which is about thirty percent, twenty five to thirty percent per unit to make that home more affordable. And so the home will be priced below that, and then you still might get like a community second to, to reduce and eliminate um even further. Uh, so for a housing payment, you know, that's four to five hundred dollars potentially less um per month that, that the consumer is spending. Uh, which is significant, especially right now.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I, I think that's an important uh element here. It is, it's amazing that you can, uh, you can provide that. I appreciate it. Thank you for your report.
Other questions from council? Uh, Councilor Mastry?
Hi, Ashley. Uh, what was your total that you received for your grant for this project?
So far, we've received a total of four million dollars from the Colorado Health Foundation and approximately one point five from HUD. Uh, and we've been working directly with DOLA to be able to contribute another twenty thousand per unit for the shared equity component. Um, so we're still short, but uh, that's part of the process that we'll be talking about later as well. Um, getting PUD, plotting, um, and zoning all through is a significant component to be able to turn in some of the applications that are required. Um, to raise some of the state funds and even federal funds that we could utilize for this. Um, so it's all sort of a timeline process as well as matching support from our local government.
What's the potential uh total that you'd be able to receive?
That we be able to receive? Um, oh, that's just for now, uh, which is about thirteen million dollars. Uh, but actually it'll be about twenty percent of the project, which is a hundred and four. Hundred and ten million, hundred and ten million we're at right now. So about twenty five percent of that will be looking to raise about twenty five million dollars. Um, in granted capital that'll go immediately towards the shared equity component um to help people, you know, move into affordable housing.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, over four hundred and fifty homes out of the six hundred with the shared equity. Would be like the shared equity, um. There'd be over four hundred and fifty homes at that shared equity price. I think that's phenomenal. That's great for um. Young folks and families uh looking to build their generational and family wealth. Um, property ownership's the way to go and thank you all for putting this project together. This is amazing.
Mayor?
Unrelated, Ashley, to the Pike's Peak project, but neighbor works still owns a Clark Western wear store. Can you give?
We do not.
You don't? What, tell us what you know about that.
Uh, so from my understanding, it's going to be remodeled similarly to how we had planned to do that. Um, however, we did sell it to a developer um this last year. We held it throughout COVID. Um, and we're not able to make progress on it because the history, because history Colorado at the state level. Um, cut all history funding during COVID and the pandemic, um, basically reallocating it to other priorities, which made a lot of sense. Uh, and we had cleaned the entire building environmentally, but we hadn't started the rehabilitation. We were counting on some of the funds coming through history Colorado.
All right, so private developer has.
So the private developer has that now. Um, it was most advantageous for us to sell it at this point in time to clear up. Capital that we could use in the Pike's Peak.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from Council Seanon? Thank you so much for that update and we look forward to hearing more about it in the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Um, so then our next agenda item is going to be a council board commission update. You'll remember a couple of months ago, we started this. Um, to really update not only each other, um, of, of the various things that. Boards and commissions that we all sit on, but also the public as well to see, you know, we do so many things in the city and boards and commissions do so many things. And I thought it would be really transparent of us to just talk about that in an open way. So, um, would you want to start with Petco updates first?
Uh, we had a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago and uh, basically, uh, there was. We, we talked about, uh, I talked about the, the dashboard, uh, which will be rolling out at the end of, of April. And uh, I've been working with our city attorney and drafting a uh, an agreement between the city and Petco and then Petco taking over the management of the dashboard. And uh, I'll be, we'll be rolling out the dashboard at the end of the month. It'll be our first month. The commitment is that we'll have this every month for the next twenty four months. And then after that. Uh, we'll, we'll engage in how we're going to fund it, you know, down the road. Uh, we continue to look at significant prospects and leads, uh, both very, very large. Companies that are interested in moving to Pueblo and some small ones too. You can't really talk a whole lot about those leads. Uh, there's a confidentiality agreement between them. Uh, but I'm very hopeful that uh, we're going to land uh, some businesses here in the near future. Uh, we did, and it, it was approved by city council. Uh, we're currently building a spec building, a hundred thousand square foot building. And um, I think that probably is a wise thing to do. So if we get a, a significant lead. We'll have a building that can move into. Um, do you want me to finish off the other boards I'm on or should we? Well, I'll let Heather. Uh, I'm also on the PURA board, the Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority Board. And uh, there's a lot of interest uh, because of uh, the loss of conventions that we're facing in Pueblo. I mean, we've. We have a, a beautiful convention center and one of the issues that we have that's significant is not being able to accommodate. The amount of hotel rooms that they need. So there's, there's a great interest in the potential of maybe building another hundred and twenty unit uh hotel in the downtown area. Uh, PURA was just given a clean bill of health on their audit. It was a financial, it's, it's done under uh. Gatsby government accounting rules and uh, it was a very clean audit. Believe it or not, the convention center is twenty five years old and the furniture in the convention center. Uh, is uh, is twenty five years old. So we've bought new furniture. You're going to see a whole new decor, you know, in, in the lobby. And then the significant thing about the renovations in the lobby area is that the Medal of Honor Society in Pueblo is redoing all of the. Uh, the Medal of Honor, uh. What would you call them? The, the display of all the, it's, it's being redone. It's going to be a lot more modern. Lot more dialogue on what these people did. So I'm really looking forward to that. I'm also on the Southwest Chief and Front Range Passenger Rail Commission. And I've only attended one meeting and uh, one of the first things they've done is that they changed the makeup of this commission. In fact, it's very possible uh, that anybody serving on that board will have to be confirmed by the Senate. And so we're in the middle of all of that. Uh, the uh, the chances of us maybe getting funding for this. This rail between Fort Collins and Trinidad is significantly enhanced because of all the work that's already been done. So if, if there's infrastructure money from the federal government, we could potentially be at the front of the line. Because we've been working on this since two thousand and seventeen. So I'm optimistic that uh, you know, that could be a really. Uh, a great thing if we could uh, at least start the planning and the funding. And so we'll, that's all I have to report. Is that what the, is that, this is your idea?
This is great.
This is what you wanted?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Because who knew that that was going to happen, you know, and now we all do. What about the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District?
Well, uh, let me start from the beginning. The City County Library District Board of Trustees, that is only a committee that uh. Recommends who is going to be appointed to the uh. Library District Board of Trustees. So we only meet whenever there's a vacancy on the Board of Trustees. That's not a, a continuous. Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District. This last Friday, I, I, I did a tour with Jeff Shoemaker. Of the Greenway District up in Denver. And we talked about uh, the possibility of forming a Fountain Creek. Foundation to do the same, same kind of work that basically the foundation in Denver is doing, did with the confluence uh, up in Denver with. The two rivers that intersect there. So uh, I'm hoping that we can uh. Get some people together and form a foundation and start developing Fountain Creek and the Confluence. The uh, PACOG, I was appointed chairman of that uh, PACOG committee. I'm also on the budget committee, so uh, I, I do two things there. On Pueblo Regional Building Commission, the Pueblo Regional Building Commission is. Almost maxed out in terms of the work they're doing. A lot of uh, work is being done here in Pueblo. In terms of uh, housing and the commercial development, that uh, mill that's being built out at the steel mill. Takes up a lot of room and a lot of uh, time from the Pueblo Regional Building. But we are in really good shape in terms of uh, if the Regional Building Commission, the inspectors are busy. Then Pueblo is busy. Uh, Pueblo Development Foundation Board of Directors, we uh, we haven't met in a couple of months, but uh. We will be meeting this week. We will be talking about that hundred thousand uh, square foot uh, building. And then I was appointed to the Pueblo Dep- Depot Activity Development Authority Board of Directors. Uh, we had one meeting via Zoom. But uh, I did a tour of Pueblo Plex uh, some time ago and uh. A lot of big things are going to be happening out of Pueblo Plex, so uh, keep tuned for that. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilor Tencio. Um, what about the Memorial Airport Advisory Committee?
I have only um, attended one of the meetings, um, and that was last month and we were still in search of a replacement. Um, airline to come in to replace, I forget the exact one and I don't want to mention it, get it wrong. Um, but uh, the airport has had a number of airlines, smaller airlines come through. Uh, I think Macy's Airline was in twice, uh, Frontier was in. And so this is just a natural kind of changing of the guards of um, the commercial aspect to our Pueblo Memorial Airport. I believe we're still in search of that, but um, Scott Ross and Greg Pradoza. Are, have a better grasp on all those situations than I do, so I don't want to misrepresent that.
HARP?
Um, yeah, so New on the Riverwalk, um, they're trying to get some additional funding, the rest of their funding for the boathouse and the Riverwalk extension. And the HARP authority is going to be um, holding an event at Brazil House Friday, May thirteenth from five to seven. It is RSVP. So if any of the council would like to attend, they can contact me or um, Michelle Francis at HARP. Um, they're looking for, for some dollars to help um, fund the boathouse, the counties. And works with giving them three million dollars out of their one A monies um, to get that funded. And so looking for some more money for that. Um, HARP did hire a new security um, team for the Riverwalk. It was a little bit more expensive than the previous uh, people that we had down there, but um, they're hoping that these people will be more apt to deal with the kinds of crime. And be able to approach the people that are down on the Riverwalk to help um, deal with the issues that are kind of going on down there. And then last, they are wanting to install a new um, security system along the Riverwalk. And PURA has actually, I think, agreed to thirty five thousand dollars of the cost. HARP does have some of the money budgeted, but they're looking for a sixty thousand dollar remainder for these cameras. Uh, these cameras will cover the entire Riverwalk and the side of Memorial Hall, um, because there isn't any cameras, I guess, right now over the parking lots and the restaurants in that area. And the police department will be able to log on to these cameras at any time to also um, view what's going on. So they are asking the city um, if we could somehow come up with the sixty thousand dollars. I don't know if this would be something that could come out of our ARPA. Intergovernmental form, um, since it, the Riverwalk is, you know, part of, part of the city to get these cameras. I sent the mayor an email, but I haven't got a response yet. On if this is something that the monies um, would be able to be used for, because they're having, you know, quite a hard time with crime and catching people. With the crime throughout the entire Riverwalk. So uh, I think the camera total is either a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty thousand. So. They have a good amount in their budget and then PURA, I think it's a matching, um, a matching thirty five thousand. So. Uh, the HARP authority is looking for that match and then the additional thirty five thousand dollars that would be left over. That's all I have.
And just a quick update from the Community Commission on Housing and Homelessness, which I sit on. Um, they, the commission is currently working to, to find permanent emergency shelter options. Um, and um, they're actually supporting the police's community meetings um, that are actually happening tonight. Uh, Councilor Mastry took part in one as well. Um, so the commission's helping um, the police department kind of organize those as well as the South Side meeting on May sixth. Um, the commission also recently partnered with Posada on a funding application, actually, to develop a sixty seven unit. That would take low income housing vouchers. So it should, it should be a really good addition to affordable housing and it would be seventy six units. So. Be thinking positive thoughts that that'll go through. Um, and the commission will actually be here on the work session agenda for May ninth. To give you all um, and us an overview of what they all do. Um, so be looking for that in the future. Just to echo Councilman Flores's um, nod to the Urban renewal authority, I thought that the furniture is gonna, is gonna be beautiful. Can't wait for it. They're gonna, they're celebrating their twenty fifth year, so that, that celebration's in June as well. Um, and I also just wanted to call out that they're, they are working with the county right now to establish a possible urban renewal authority district. Called West Pueblo to facilitate the Joe Martinez extension as well. So that could be really helpful. With that project and that then concludes the updates unless there's any other business. And if not, I see none. It's seven o'clock and I adjourn this work session and we're going to take a ten minute recess before regular meeting, Mayor.
Madam Chair, we're going to add a, an executive session to the council's agenda this evening. You want to try to do that before we start the regular meeting? Or you want to do it at the conclusion of the regular meeting?
What are the thoughts from Council? Doesn't that have to be posted? I mean, if it's not on the agenda, I don't think we can do it.
No, under the open meetings law, council can go into an executive session at any time.
Anytime, that's correct, sorry. So would you all like to do it now or at the end of the regular meeting? We are going to then postpone it. It sounds like Mayor to do it at the end of the meeting and we'll move to. Go into executive session after there. So it's seven oh one. We're going to take a ten minute recess before the regular meeting.